This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the home news Tribune, the Star Leisure, and the Highland Park Planet on April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbboro.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, two twenty-one South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and right of council chambers. Michael, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Foster here. Councilwoman Canavera.
She's on the safe tonight.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Council President Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun.
Here.
Councilman Pussoni.
Here.
Borough Attorney Shaw.
Here.
Special Counsel Downing.
Here.
Borough Administrator Holvera.
Here.
Okay. For the last minutes, motion to approve the following minutes as distributed June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, regular and executive session meeting July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, regular session meeting and July twenty-third executive session meeting.
Second.
Second. Councilman Wood.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun.
Yes.
Councilman Pussoni.
Yes.
And now it's time for council reports. And I'm going to start off with Councilmember Kim Chohun.
Yes, I just like to, and I know tonight we're accepting the twenty twenty-three audit, so I'd like to thank all the staff and especially, oh, you can't hear me, sorry, and especially our Finance Department, Taxation Department, and all the employees in the Borough. So, thank you, and the full audit will be available on the website.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Matt Hale, and I chair the Economic Development Committee. We have a number of exciting things on the agenda tonight, but first just reminders. As always, the world famous Highland Park Farmers Market is in full summer swing on Fridays from one to four. Please get out on Fridays to support the market. Also, coming up on Sunday, September eighth, from eleven thirty to four thirty, is the annual Arts in Parks Festival, art show, arts and crafts sale in downtown Highland Park. One of the biggest events of the year, so please come out and support that. And then, as always, please remember to do as much as you can to shop local. We've got some new local businesses. Super Fresh is one everybody's thinking about, but also Peetie's Pizza. There's a new Smoothie Bar Connecticut. All these businesses are really important, especially new ones are really important to help out with local folks coming to them. Tonight, a number of agenda items are on the Economic Development Bucket. We have a second reading of a public hearing on the Upper Raritan Avenue Redevelopment Plan. We have a first reading on new redevelopment plan on eight, ten, North Second. We're going to vote also on the implementation and execution of some amendments to a previous redevelopment agreement about charity on rural school, which will bring, among other things, some of the sidewalks up on Madison Avenue. We're also authorizing RFP for planning landscape architecture and engineering services for the creation of our long-awaited pedestrian plaza on South Third. It's really exciting to see that come to fruition. This is a group that's going to help us in the community planning process to develop the pedestrian plaza as we move forward. All these developments are a big part of what our master plan envisions, making sure that there are opportunities for smaller developments that add to the diversity of Highland Park. They're not as big as Track A or Track C, but they all contribute to the revitalization of the borough in different ways and in exciting ways, so it's really exciting to see them come on board. And I wanted to thank Terry and Joe and the whole team for moving those things along. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. And then Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Phil George, and I'm a liaison to the Public Safety Committee. That's just a very short report tonight. Public Safety Committee, the Police Fire Department, First Aid Squad, and the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee invited to the National Night Out, the annual event, this Thursday, August fifteenth, from six p.m. to nine p.m. at Bardo School. Now, I know if you look at the calendar, it's at the same time as the Strazza Casters and Park Stock. But think about it, Bardo School is only a few blocks from the park, so you can catch both events. For a change, actually, I have a conflict in schedules and interest, but fun things to do in Highland Park at the same time. But stop by at National Night Out, share a moment with our officers, our firefighters, our first aid squad, and the volunteers who work on many committees, which will be having informational booths, fun activities. Park Stock doesn't have a bouncy house, and they don't have really big red stuff with ladders on it. We do. We're going to have fun with that, so I'd like you to come in. Remember, it's only a few blocks down, so you can catch both events and catch the second set of the Strazza Casters and have a great time. A note, our fire department quickly extinguished a kitchen fire recently up on Raritan Avenue. We got some information on that. Unfortunately, they were already contained in the kitchen fire, but they asked me to remind everyone, kitchen fires are rather common, and they're also one of the easiest things to control. PSEG actually has, who is a service provider for utilities in town for most of us, at safetytips-PSE-G, pseeg.com is a safety tips site that they have that they put out for everyone to make as simple as making sure cooking services are flattable, flattable surfaces like cooking oils and keeping the kitchen safe by an extinguisher underneath the stage. Finally, to all of you with e-bucks in these scooters or kids who have them, recently, there's been an uptick in accidents that are serious enough for emergency room reporting. Distracted scooting is becoming a thing, and wearing my municipal prosecutor hat, we've been getting a lot of informational updates on scooters that are actually being sold to kids now with cellphone mounts on the handlebars. That is distracted driving. Some of the towns that I represent are giving tickets out for distracted driving, and it is extremely dangerous. A scooter does not have a lot of protections like a car does. Some accidents are that accidents, reportable accidents with under eighteen on scooters is up four hundred percent since last year. So, please, if you have a scooter, you use a scooter, or you have family members who do, please try and enforce some of the safety. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember, for your report, and I would also like to add that people should wear their helmet. It really would save their lives. Helmet is not required, but it's smart to do so. Councilmember Colson.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jason Lestel. I chair the Recreation and Arts Committee. In that, while the work of the Department of Community Services, have a couple of exciting things to announce there. The Park Stock Musical Festival, which is our annual summer outdoor concert series, continues this Thursday, the first of the last two Park Stock concerts of the year. And on this Thursday, August fifteenth, from six to eight p.m., the same overlapping song with the National Night Out, which are another amazing opportunity for recreation in town. That'll be featuring the Strazza Casters, which is a rock and roll pop rock slash instrumental guitar band. So again, this is from six to eight p.m. and repeated at Route One in Donaldson Park. There will be select things vendors onsite, and there's a rain date on Thursday, August twenty-second, just in case. Hopefully, we won't need to use that. And then finally, our last Park Stock Festival of this summer will also be our big end-of-summer festival, which will be on Thursday, August twenty-ninth. That'll be featuring Cliff Westwall, which is an electrified on-tot band. And there will be a number of other activities and features, including the bounce house bill, my bounce house, and obstacle course and boot trucks. The Park Stock and the Summer Festival will also be held six to eight p.m. This one is expected to be there. It will be located in the main field in Donaldson Park. I will note that unfortunately, due to various logistical issues, we're unable to have a rain date for this event, so hopefully, 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 we will have good weather, because this event is going to be a lot of fun. Hope to see all of them there. A few other items from the Department of Community Services. There will be an ice cream social on Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, at two p.m. at the Community Center, featuring Aggie Oates' truck with a selection of ice cream and Italian ices. And lastly, the Community Services, there will be, I just want to announce the Fall Recreation Program. Registration for several have broken up, including chess, table tennis, improv, youth and adult dance classes, assorted adult fitness classes, youth soccer, and youth track football, and there's more to come, so please keep an eye out for emails from the Department or check out their website through the Borough site. And then, one final note, since I'm a liaison to the Arts Commission, just want to let you know that there is a Highland Park Poetry Festival that they're planning for October sixth, from five to nine, at Kino's. More details will come, so stay tuned for that. And that is my report tonight.
Thank you. Council President Hirsch.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Public Works Committee, and I think everything that we do should have a bouncy house, so that's fair, and everyone knows that actually all has a bouncy house. But it's not a competition. I think it's just a lesser of the volume of activity that's going on in Highland Park. It's a really exciting time, and there's a lot happening. I just wanted to just report on a few things tonight. Item twelve B is the first reading of an ordinance that outlines the capital ordinance for road improvements. While it just says Highland Avenue, and that was the name of the application of state to receive funds from the Transportation Trust Fund. But what this ordinance does do is it outlines road improvements from Graham Street from Forte to Fifth, South Eighth Avenue from Benner to Woodbridge, and then all of Highland Avenue. And if Highland Avenue sounds familiar to some of you, it's because PSEG was just out there to explore, so we're going to help navigate that one as well. This is just this one ordinance. There's more road improvements coming. And if you have any questions about future road projects for two thousand twenty-four, they're listed on our website, www.hbboro.com. This one, Millisack County, is paving roadways and parking lots in Donaldson Park. Weather permitting, obviously, it's been, we've had some wild weather the last couple of weeks, but all facilities will remain open during these projects. Just an update on the Felton Avenue Todd Lot. The mayor has indicated a strong support for reinvestment in our existing public spaces and identifying opportunities for new in neighborhood passive recreational locations. So, thank Mala Ma Grove Park, AKA Carson Street Park, the Felton Avenue Todd Lot. We don't have a lot of municipal parks, though, even though we're surrounded by two beautiful county parks. We'd like to see a little more in the way of community parks. So, our first investment is in the Felton Avenue Todd Lot. Construction is underway. There's new equipment, new servicing, new plantings, all in that small space, and really think that it will be a magical spot for the neighborhood and for everything. Again, just wanted to mention cooling centers, and Councilwoman Canavera is out tonight. When we do have times of extreme heat, fortunately, it doesn't look like that's going to be this week, residents in need of shelter during heat advisories and excessive heat warnings can take advantage of air conditioning right here at the Community Center and Borough Hall during business hours. And we are also, we've been grateful to our community partner, the Reform Church of Highland Park, for making their quilt room available to residents during the evening and weekends. So, if there is a heat advisory, if you're signed up for NEXO, you'll receive a notification on your phone and an email, but you can always call dispatch or the non-emergency police dispatch line, seven three two five seven two three eight zero zero for questions. If you or someone needs housing assistance, questions about eviction, or to get a better understanding of available housing facilities, start by dialing two one one or call eight seven seven six five two one one four eight. Their services are free, confidential, and multilingual, and they will help navigate the often Byzantine support system that exists. And it is Byzantine, but fairly robust support system that exists in New Jersey. But if you're experiencing instability, the last thing that you're thinking about doing is being your own advocate as you carry on with all of your daily routines, work, life, school, family, and everything. So, please reach out and make sure that you know what is available. Thank you to, this is not a public, this is not, this won't start off as public words because it has to do with town camp, but I just wanted to reply, we gave a preview before, but the Environmental Commission was involved in working with Camp Counselor Mason Springer-Lipton, Highland Park High School grad, who is currently an environmental history major at Rutgers University. Two weeks ago, Mason led campers on a tour of unnamed streams for both ecological exploration and to name them. Members of the Environmental Commission were on hand as well, and the goal is for the Environmental Commission next to recommend to the mayor and council to officially name the stream. So, we really look forward to being the next stop in this civic engagement process that really brings in the campers to learn about their ecology and also take ownership over some of these streams that are unnamed. Sustainable Highland Park conducts regular cleanups. They were going to be fewer in August, just because it is August, but please join Sustainable Highland Park and the Highland Park Ecology and Environmental Group for trash cleanups. To get on their list, please email hpeegnews, that's hpeegnews@gmail.com. Cleanups are typically from ten a.m. to noon on the first Saturday and third Sunday of each month. So, get on the list, and it's a really great time to contribute and give back to your community. Trim, just a little PSA, one of the, you know, a very common correspondence that comes into the governing body has to do with crosswalk availability, crosswalk access and sight lines, particularly as you're driving. Being able to see around corners is a pivotal piece of, you know, what makes for a safe pedestrian, a cycleable community. So, please, if you have a corner property, enjoy the view. Make sure that if you do have shrubs around the corner, just make sure that they are trimmed back so the cars can see around and so pedestrians can see if there are vehicles coming. This morning, Borough Administrator Terry Holvera and I attended the Millisack County Housing Summit over at Millisack College. Really great update on housing policy in New Jersey and kind of an overview, which offered an overview of the new affordable housing law in New Jersey, A four S fifty. And what that does is that it rewrites how municipal obligations are determined as we comply with our required obligations to produce affordable housing in New Jersey. So, Sustainable, excuse me, Highland Park made its third round obligation successfully, and we expect that towns will get their fourth round obligation starting later in the year. What this bill does is that it provides a lot of flexibility and a lot of options for municipalities to meet their obligation. And it was really great to learn more about the law and to hear from some experts who could kind of walk through some aspects of the law with us. And on that, as we sit up here explaining things, you know, and what's going on in local government, I did want to acknowledge the two passings of people who really helped shape the civic landscape in New Jersey. Michael Aaron and Ingrid Reid. Ingrid Reid was a, led the New Jersey Project at the Eagleton Institute at Rutgers University, and she was a proud advocate for feminism, civil rights, and public policy discussions based on facts and open mindness. She came to public policy from a very, very journalistic perspective, which, no surprise, led her to promoting government transparency and led her to becoming the founder and board chair of NJ Spotlight, which is an incredible resource, news resource in New Jersey if you don't read it, njspotlight.org. She served as Chair of Community Advisory Board of New Jersey PBS, and her involvement with both organizations helped facilitate the merger of NJ Spotlight with NJTV under WINT in two thousand nineteen. Michael Aaron was a senior political correspondent for New Jersey Network News. He died today after a long illness, and he was long considered the dean of the State House Press Corps and trepid with a career that spanned over forty years of New Jersey's political history. Their presence, you know, was invaluable, I think, to all of us to really understand the machinations, the political aspects, the ins and outs of government, and how things function, particularly at the state level. And, you know, both from my hometown of Princeton, and I happen to know both of them as well and grew up with their children. So, it really is an enormous loss to New Jersey to lose these voices, and I think that the best way that we can honor them is to carry forward and not repeat necessarily what we see, you know, on the internet when it comes to either misinformation or unverifiable facts. We have a reporter in the audience today, which I'm truly grateful for. When I was a reporter, you know, we used to have three people covering zoning board meetings. And so, it was a, you know, and so it's a different time now, and the way that we reach the public is different now. So, to lose the voices that help us understand how government works, to help us understand how we can interact and help change, and help advocate for change with, you know, various stakeholders and local governments, is a big loss. And so, I think we all have shoes to fill when it comes to planning that role, and they absolutely will be missed. So, thank you for your input, Mayor. That's my report.
Okay. Borough Administrator report?
Yes. Mayor, thanks. Jerry Holvera, Borough Administrator, Economic Development Director. One reminder, the grace period for property taxes ends August twentieth, so it's just a gentle reminder, if you pay your property taxes directly to the borough, not through your mortgage, that's due by the twentieth, so just wanted to remind you that third quarter taxes are due. That's my administrator hat. And then, moving to my Economic Development hat, Councilmember Hale mentioned a number of items on the agenda, so we'll go into depth on much of that other than to say, with regard to Upper Raritan's redevelopment plan that did go to the Planning Board last week. They did deem it consistent with the master plan, as we hoped that they would. So, just know that as you enter into the public hearing, that the Planning Board did review it and found it to be not inconsistent, which is the technical bar we have to meet with the Planning Board. I know it's awkward, but. And just as a reminder to those who are maybe as familiar with the plan, that plan covers the area fronting Raritan Avenue between South Kent Avenue and Maryland Avenue, and we've done it at Upper Raritan for the time being. So, it's basically two blocks there that mainly fronts Raritan Avenue, allowing for multifamily and commercial misuse development there. With regard to eight, ten, or Second Avenue, that's the ordinance that's being introduced this evening. And just as a reminder, that's for relatively small property on North Second, and it basically allows for an adaptive means of former-laid building into either apartments and/or if it gets demolished, a one or a two-family dwelling. That's kind of the reader's digest version of that plan. Four thirty-three, Cleveland Avenue, amendments to the developer agreement. Essentially, we're, the school's getting very close to being ready to open. I think they're targeting September ninth as their opening date. And there were a number of off-site infrastructure improvements that have been negotiated in our redevelopment agreement that upon further investigation in the field either made sense or needs to be reevaluated. This agreement reflects our neutral understanding of what's realistic. It also grants a little additional time after opening to complete those improvements, but we're really excited, the most prominent being some missing links sidewalks on Madison and North Second, as well as some share-o, which are shared road markings for bikes and cars, and some crosswalk enhancements kind of throughout the project and beyond. Sorry, I just, I was busy. The last item I just thought I'd mention, there are three matters relating to cannabis businesses on the agenda tonight. This is an extension of our local support. It's not the issue of their license. They've all requested additional time. There are various dates in their projects, but they are all making good progress and are eager to open as soon as they possibly can. So, you may recall, I granted administrative extensions about six months ago, which is allowed for our ordinance. Any further extensions have to come before council. So, these three, I should mention, the three, one is at three eleven Raritan Avenue, Main Street Dispensary. You have Blackburn at one seventy-six Woodbridge, and Florah Highland Park at eighty-five Raritan. All have requested extensions, and I just would mention that I feel it's warranted, and I hope you'll support that on the agenda. So, thank you for that, Mayor.
Borough Attorney report?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. And before I start my report, that Council President Hirsch mentioned two stellar pillars of New Jersey that passed and that we all have learned a lot from throughout the years. But we have something very personal to, one of, on here in Highland Park, and Councilmember Hale, father passed last week, and he was an extraordinary man. And if you have a moment, please go to Facebook and just read a little bit about it. He was a professor of community, I want to say, community services. He gave his life to empowering and providing for healthcare services for those who are less fortunate. He's traveled to places such as Haiti, Dominican Republic, and all over the world trying to make this world a little bit better. And one of the interesting stories that Councilmember Hale shared is that his dad wanted to be remembered as somebody that gave back, someone that did community service. And if you read his bio, you will see that he truly gave back and provided for those who are less fortunate, something that I would like to have on my appetite as well. But at that, this point, can we take a moment of silence for all of you? Thank you.
Mayor, thank you for doing that, because I could.
We're all in one big empty belly. Well, Super Fresh, if you've passed Super Fresh recently, you see they have a sign out saying that they're coming soon, and the expected opening date is going to be Labor Day. But they also have something else that's hanging out, and it says, "We are hiring." So, I think it's super official. So, if they told me that they would hire kids, high school students who want to work after school, so that's an opportunity right there, and anyone in town or surrounding towns who are interested in employment at Super Fresh, they really should go and fill out an application out. So, I'm really excited, or should I say, I'm super excited about Super Fresh's opening date. So, it's a good thing Highland Park was on the way there. We, Councilmember, Councilmembers, both Hale and Hirsch, spoke about funding that we received. Last week, we did a press conference with Congressman Pallone, and the press conference was about safety in our town, keeping our streets safe, and we received a grant from Congressman, with Congressman Pallone's effort from the federal government for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, we've been doing really good with grants. We also received a grant from the state, thanks to our company person and our Senator Karabenchik in Stanley, and also Senator Diamond. And we received a grant for our plaza, for one million dollars, to get our downtown plaza going, and another grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for EV trucks. So, we're racking in the grants this year, and we're going to continue to pursue grants to make sure that we not only get our fair share, that we can really start doing some serious improvements in our town. I'm really happy about that. I also want to say thank you to the first responders that are out constantly putting out fires and keeping towns, keeping our town safe, and echo what Councilmember George said about fire safety and be careful about grease fires, because that's really dangerous. While I'm saying that, the hurricane season is upon us, and it's sooner this year. Normally, it's at the end of September. It's sooner, and we have all experienced the massive heavy rains and delays because of rain and that kind of thing. Please, go to our website. We put out reports about storms and get information that you may need to be prepared and to know what to do in case you're experiencing an emergency during the storm. We have information on our website, and that's my report. And now, it's time for our first public participation. Twenty-one minutes, three minutes per speaker, limited to items on the agenda. Comments from members of the public, attending in person will be heard first, followed by those members attending on Zoom. followed by those members attending on Zoom. Please step up to the microphone with your name and address.
I lose the microphone so I don't kick the tables.
You're sure enough, Mayor.
Thanks. Lois, North Second Avenue. Upcoming Highland ordinance 24-2092. Is this working?
Agreement is on.
We can switch it up.
Just means go. Okay. Lois, North Second Avenue. Highland Avenue ordinance coming up, which I see is going to be, I guess, discussion next week, but you mentioned it anyway. Ordis number 24-2093 about Highland Avenue and other locations. Whatever happened to a year and a half, two years ago, money was put aside for Denison Street Watchboard Block? And CME was going to do a wonderful site plan and, and it's still a watchboard in the third block. Oh, that's right. You can't answer me. Okay. I'll talk about the one that's going to the public hearing afterward later on. And I want to point out, I sincerely think your mission statement needs updating. The last few words in the last sentence, you encourage direct public participation. Ah, you don't. We get three minutes, once a month, maybe twice a month, maybe twice in a meeting. That's it. We can't talk like the U.S. Constitution promised us. Discuss things, read the minutes. Back in the 50s and 60s, meetings went, I don't want to be here, until 10:30, 11:30, 12 o'clock. But it was intense and there were debates. And it was interesting and they got things done. So I guess I'll stop there. I met Michael Aaron once accidentally at the State House. He wasn't very friendly, but he was working. And I'll be back about to record his preserve in a little while.
Anyone else who wishes to speak? Anything on the agenda?
Good evening. Charlie Cradaville, editor of New Project Today, community newspaper serving the area. I just want to understand, this is the public comment on general matters or agenda items only?
Agenda items only.
Okay. You'll have another comment later? Okay.
Yes, Mayor. I see a couple hands up. We have seven attendees total online. First up is Carl Prey. Please state your names and records, please.
Hi, Terry Forster, Denison Street. I appreciate Lois's question about Denison Street. I like to know, as someone who lives right where, and she called it, whatever she called it, the basically unpaved part of Denison Street that you were supposed to be repairing. When that is going to happen, there's obviously the no, nothing about whatever you were going to do, whatever your site plan was. And there's been obviously no repair done. So I'd like to know when that's going to happen. I don't know why she thought that you didn't have to answer that question, but I think you should have to answer that question. And I have an additional comment on, on Denison Street and North Fourth, which are both part of, you know, this repair process supposedly. People double park on North Fourth. People park on the south side of Denison Street between Fourth and Fifth. And I've never seen anybody get a ticket. It's very dangerous. You could, you can't, when these trucks are double parked on North Fourth or when people who are, who are eating at the pizza place and getting stuff at Morty's or maybe Pinos, they double park and they stay on Denison Street where they're not allowed to park for a long time. And I've never seen anybody get a ticket. I've never seen anybody told they can't park there. And I'd like to see a little bit of enforcement in Highland Park. So I'd like to know, when, when is Denison Street actually going to get repaired? It's been like probably 25 years since anything has happened. Thank you.
Terry, anyone else?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Seeing that there's no more, no, no one else, may I have a motion to close public participation?
Second.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hersch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Choham?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
And Council President, do you want to address the issue with Denison Street?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Ms. Forster, you was levying up. I think you, I think you asked this at the last meeting, but Denison Street is on the 2024 Road Projects List, as we discussed. And in fact, this just came in for, for, for work on Denison Street as well as North Fourth Avenue and Harbor Street. So those are three, those are three roadways that we have been discussing all year long. And happy to continue answering those questions, but we expect that this work will take place in the fall. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Ordinance requiring a second reading. Clark, can you report an ordinance number 24-2089?
In ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, in ordinance of the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, authorizing the adoption of Upper Raritan Avenue redevelopment plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing loan NJSA 40A:12A-1 et cetera, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage and final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file.
And now it's time for a public hearing on this ordinance. If anyone who wishes to speak on this ordinance, you may come up to the microphone. Please give your name and address.
Lois, North Second Avenue. Okay. I'm looking at the plans. You're taking away lots of black pavement from two properties. I don't know how, if you helped, Lube It All, if you helped the widow of Dr. Goldsmith at the veterinary agency, did our main street step in, which was supposed to take the place of a chamber of Congress? I don't know. She wants to sell the business and obviously has to move. Did anybody help her out? No, I don't think so. Okay. And, and also, I just want to warn the neighbors up there that we were told no eminent domain or no condemnation tried A. And now it's happening, gung ho, eminent domain, not the exact same definition. But it's, it's frightening when you have residential property up above the cleaners and, and you know that you're on the way out. Forty years here means nothing. Some towns just, well, employees get a bonus for being here, longevity bonus, but not you, Bruce. My classic cleaners. It makes no sense. So McKinney left after whatever, 60 years. Anyhow, so neighbors up at the Upper Raritan, be very wary. Thank you.
Council, Kieran Crowley, 218 Harrison Avenue. I'd like to comment on some very interesting discussion at the planning board last week in relation to Upper Raritan. So I made some notes. A board member flagged that the needs of borough schools were not considered in that redevelopment plan. And it led to a really interesting discussion. And I think, to really summarize it, it basically said that back when the master plan was written, so much has changed in the town on all fronts, but in particular with the schools, there's been some emerging challenges. And the one that was spoken to specifically was that urban school has these temporary units, which are housing the youngest students. And I think this is all, you know, driven by recent changes in state law. You're probably aware of what I'm talking about. But it was very interesting that the discussion went through. You know, well, should the development plan at least make reference to this issue in the school district? So I know usually there's quite a clear separation between the borough and the schools. But it led to a good discussion. And I think the way I felt it ended was, you know, it's not a requirement for these development plans now, but in the future. It did, I think there was kind of consensus that maybe some of these school considerations should be factored into development plans, you know, in the future. So my take home was that it does make sense to me that the borough should look for win-win opportunities that could maybe benefit the borough and benefit the schools. And yes, this planning board discussion was just about one of your projects, but I think it kind of leads to a bigger point. So I count five or six development projects that are kind of in the pipeline right now, tracks A to D, and then the two that are being mentioned tonight. So that's a lot of redevelopment. And, you know, I wonder, well, what are the potential impacts on the schools? Planning board were talking about kind of, I think, space around these classrooms. But the biggest concern for me is financial. So if we're going to go down the route of financial incentives, pilot agreements, how will that impact school funding? And at the same time, the roll that may go up. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that discussion last week, and I encourage you to listen to it. I know you're all really busy, but experts who know this area far better than I just made good points. Didn't necessarily come up with the answers. And Mr. Piston, I know you were there. So if you would either confirm or even tweak my summary, you know, I'd invite that. And lastly, for the mayor, do you think that the borough has a responsibility, as much as it can, to consider the schools in its redevelopment planning and its redevelopment projects? Thank you.
Dee Donaldson, I was wondering if this grand plan of the Upper Raritan and whatever other developments are coming, which are probably welcome and a good thing. I was wondering if there's any consideration of the people that own the houses on those, in that area. Do they just, do you just, you know, tell them to get out and pay them some fair market? What's the process? Is it just, you know, you're leaving, we're making this a better place? That's what I wanted to ask. Sorry.
I'm just, Lois, North Second, piggybacking on the gentleman from Harrison. If you edit, I'm sure all of you have the first Highland Park historic book. Page 78 talks about that overcrowded schools after post-World War II baby boom. In the 60s, your kids, or you, or your grandchildren in the future might be, they were in, they were overcrowded. There were classrooms in the hallways, in the room closets, and even one school's boiler room. That's what you're looking at, a baby boom. And I'm not hearing a study on school expansions, police and fire expansions. Other master plans have circulation. We see centralized parking management. I don't remember circulation traffic. So where are the schools going to grow to? How are we going to pay for it? How are you going to pay for it? Your kids, not me. Thanks.
Anyone answer with any questions?
No, Mayor.
Before we move on, on this particular one, Terry, you want to, you're here to answer some of the questions about... First, I would like to say that we have been in conversation with the superintendent and we are exploring, we're looking at all evidence. And that's, that's being looked at. It's not that we're oblivious to that, that may, that we may have an impact on the school system. We have been having conversations. Those conversations will continue to happen. Terry, would you like to report on anything about the housing and the process for housing in that Upper Raritan area?
I'll try to address the comments from Dee.
Yes.
So, so with the Upper Raritan's plan, all of our plans are a little bit different based on where they are. But the Upper Raritan plan, which is what we're here talking about with this public hearing, it's a, there's nothing compelling to a property owner to do the plan. We think, we want to encourage the reinvestment. We think it will improve their properties as well as the streetscape. But there's nothing that's forcing a given property owner to do that. And this is, we're talking about a small handful of properties in the case of that plan. So in general, our approach is to work very, you know, in collaboration with the property owners because we do want to see the plan happen. And so we did consult with some of the more engaged property owners who, the Lube It All property in particular, they had, that's the, the former Lube It All, because it's kind of the most dreadful streetscape apologies. But also, they expressed an interest. So we, we did bounce ideas around before we finalized the plan. So our hope is to see it happen, but to do it collaboratively with, with the property owners. And that's our approach to a lot of our, our plans, the smaller plans that we're talking about today. I can't go back and forth with you. That's not the format. Sorry. But I'm happy, if you want to get my contact after, to answer any of the questions.
Sure. Thank you.
The... Hi, there. I think, I think the clerk did pass along the notes from the board attorney from the planning board, but certainly we can talk more about Mr. Crowley's points. And we, I will let go with the mayor since we do work in collaboration. I will point out multifamily housing and school children generation. There's a lot of studies out there and we're looking at that very closely to try to anticipate as best we can what we think the generation of schoolchildren might be from our redevelopment projects. But it's not a, it's not exact science, but that is something on our minds and we are thinking about that for sure. Mayor, those are the main notes I think I have.
I think you answered adequately. Thank you. May I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance number 24-2089?
Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to make one comment about the public. I know that sometimes it seems that we want to engage in a, in a conversation, but once the individuals up here are answering any of the questions, we can have any dialogue going on with the public. So I just wanted to make that clear because we have two more ordinances and another public portion to go through. Thank you so much.
Roll call?
Second.
Oh, we got a second. May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hersch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Choham?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
Clerk, please report. Oh, may I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number 24-2089?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hersch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Choham?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
Okay. Now, clerk, please report an ordinance number 24-2090.
Ordinance approving authorizing the entering into execution and delivery of a lease and agreement with Middlesex County Improvement Authority relating to the issuance of county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds, Series 2024 of the Middlesex County Improvement Authority, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage and final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file.
And now we're going to go to public hearing on this particular ordinance. Anyone who wishes to speak on this particular one, may do so now. I come up to the microphone, give your name and address. Seeing that there's none, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay. Okay. May I have a motion to close this public hearing on ordinance number 24-2090?
Motion to call.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hersch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Choham?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number 24-2090?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hersch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Choham?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
Clerk, please report an ordinance number 24-2091.
Loan ordinance authorizing the enter into, entering into execution and delivery of a loan and security agreement with Middlesex County Improvement Authority for the undertaking of various 2024 capital improvements and the acquisition of and installation of, as applicable, a various equipment with an estimated cost of $260,000, the cost of such improvements and equipment to be financed through the issuance of county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds. Series 2024, the Middlesex County Improvement Authority has been duly advertised for consideration and passage on final reading by title and affidavit to publication or on file.
Now it's time for public participation on this ordinance. If you wish to speak, please come up to the microphone, give your name and address. Terry, anyone on Zoom?
No, Mayor.
Seeing that there's no, there's no participation, may I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance of twenty-four two zero nine one? Roll call.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ken Chouhan?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Roll call. May, may I have a motion? May I have a motion to adopt or reject twenty-four dash two zero nine one?
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ken Chouhan?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Ordinance requiring first reading. Ordinance number, clear. Please report an introduction of ordinance number twenty-four dash two zero nine two.
In ordinance of the Borough Council, the Borough Highland Park, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, authorizing the adoption of the eight-ten North Second Avenue redevelopment plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA forty-eight, one twelve A dash one at Sec, has been duly introduced by the Economic Development Plan Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to approve or reject ordinance number twenty-four dash two zero nine two to authorize publication as reviewed by law and set public hearing date for September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four?
I should do approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ken Chouhan?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Clear. Please report an introduction of ordinance number twenty-four dash two zero nine three.
Capital ordinance providing for improvements to the Highland, to Highland Ave in the County of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating five hundred and fifty thousand to the Department of Transportation, local transportation project program, therefore to pay the cost thereof, has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on final reading or on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to approve or reject ordinance number twenty-four dash two nine three to authorize publication as required by law and set public hearing for September third, two thousand twenty-four? Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes, and again, uh, this is more than just how I'm at. This includes Graham from Fourth to Fifth and Saturday from Center to Woodbridge. Thank you, uh, for administrator over there for that.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ken Chouhan?
Yes.
And Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Uh, consent agenda items resolution. May I have, I'll ask council members if they would like, and if they would like any of the following consent agenda items to be pulled from consent agenda? Any items to be pulled?
No, ma'am.
Good. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items thirteen A through thirteen S?
Second.
Roll call. Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ken Chouhan?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Now it's time for the second public participation. Three minutes per speaker on any topic. Subject to end it, not to conclude at nine PM. Comments from members of the public attending in person will be heard first, followed by those attended on Zoom. If you wish to speak, please come up to the microphone, name and address, please.
Good evening. Charlie Rattell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Uh, I want to begin, by extent, with sincere condolences to Councilman Hale on your loss. I want to respond to Council President. Uh, thank you for the kind words. Uh, I, I only wish the people who run Middlesex County had the same gratitude, uh, feeling when, when I walk into the room with them. And, uh, I know today was an example, great to see you, and unfortunately was, was not allowed to enter that event, bring my camera and record that event. It's very unfortunate. But I'm here, uh, to discuss some borough business. I want to raise a complaint about a municipal judge. I'm not sure how many municipal judges you have. You only have one, or are there multiple?
Um, sir, all of the questions are gonna be asked altogether from individuals in person and then online. And we're gonna close the public portion, and then the questions are gonna be answered if we have the information. If you don't, we're gonna follow up with the information to get to you, okay?
I don't understand why it can't be answered right away, but, um, I would like to complain about Judge Edward Herman, uh, his handling of a case that's moved from New Brunswick, the case of State of New Jersey versus Susie and Secor Ludwig, uh, was transferred from New Brunswick to Highland Park because of the defendant's elected position in New Brunswick. And I personally requested insipid permission to record and photograph the defendant's case. The date of the appearance was July thirty-first, and I requested and obtained permission more than a month before that. The permission came from the presiding municipal judge, Christine Heitman, and Judge Herman began the day by overturning Judge Heitman's approval and denying me the right that I had expected to get to be able to record and photograph the proceeding. Just to be, so you can understand what we're talking about, it was a Zoom, Zoom proceeding, um, so I was at my desk. And, uh, yeah, it was actually quite shocking, because I've never seen a municipal judge overturn a higher, uh, judge. I filed a, a letter with the assignment judge for Middlesex County, and, uh, it appears that the trial court administrator's office agrees with me that what happened was utterly wrong, that, uh, this was an example of overreach by Judge Herman, and that now they're rounding up all the municipal judges to, to make sure that they understand rules, uh, for how this stuff is supposed to work. And so I wanted to bring this to you because, understanding municipal judges are appointed by the mayor and council, and, uh, I don't know what powers you do have, uh, as far as, uh, um, you know, trying to remedy, uh, or, or remediate the problem.
Thirty seconds.
But, uh, I certainly know that, uh, you know, if this person comes up for a reappointment, you should think twice based on the way he's handled this matter. Uh, I think that, uh, you know, if you want to learn more, I'm happy to share a little bit with the, the borough clerk and, and borough clerk and pass it on to you all as elected officials. But I wanted to bring this to your attention today, so I appreciate you hearing me out, and we welcome any response you have.
Ma'am, I had mentioned before, there's no public participation.
Kieran Crowley, two eighteen Harrison Avenue. Um, on the consent agenda, item two-one-three, there's the RFP for the plaza. Just two quick questions on that. So the RFP that will go out, is that giving all three options that the public was presented in June? Um, and then responders will kind of pick the best? Or has, you know, a, a preferred scenario been identified? And then the second question, when you do get bids, will that review of the bids and the decision, will that include members of the public? Or will that be in an executive session and, you know, uh, we'll just, you know, I guess the public would then head with a new developer sign or, or new plan? Thank you.
Terry, anyone else?
Oh, sorry, ma'am. Oh, there is. Okay.
Hello, it's North Second Avenue. Uh, since I can't ask if there still are a residential single family on the ecological preserve zone, which apparently ecological preserve zone doesn't mean like park or, or someplace you don't develop. You cannot develop, people. The nineteen eighty-eight, we got the Haynesville passed. You guys weren't holding diapers. You should have heard about this. This was statewide. This was an important, lots of business for Trenton. We absolutely busted our butts working on this. Eighty-eight was the Haynesville. No development. Now, I've got the ninety-eight, when state DOT wanted to enlarge Metler's Lane, it's eighteen extension doubling bridge, and put a dirt handle, and it was passed in the seven, nineteen ninety-eight, again saying, um, the two, two hundred and eight legislature, federal, seven to fourteen eighty-eight. No, you can't. Neither Rutgers, State University, Board of Governors, trustees, state agencies instrumented. No one may develop, build upon, you've got your units, permit any other person to utilize, develop or build upon. You've all got electronic devices, people, any undeveloped real property. Now, I don't know if this came in, you can't tell me, if this came from Rutgers Board of Governor or the Department of the, of the Governor's Office or the Treasurer's Office. This can only be for scientific use. You cannot put parking, blah, 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 none of it. Associated Buffer, the Natural Teaching Zone, that was called in nineteen eighty-eight. Now it's the Memorial Preserve. For purposes other than scientific research, study, instruction, land specifically related, paving of any area for any purpose shall constitute a conflict event. You can't do it. This is a preserve. You're not building on Donaldson Park. You know, you're smart enough to know not to build on Johnson Park. I don't care. It's here. You've got little pieces of each of those two parks. You cannot do anything, number one. Number two, when Ron Haskins was police chief, I brought a, a piece of ordinance, a hand grenade here to the office across the street, and I'm sure he's got his books. And, and it was a dummy, because that was Camp Kilmer. And on your seventy-four taxes, you've got that it was exempt because it was a military camp. So unless my questions are, did you do a cleanup? Did you contact the Governor's Office? Who gave the permission? Why genius doesn't know what ecological preserve means? I'd like to know where this came from. I could put a request for information above the borough clerk's office, but this is not for touching. I, thank you.
Here we have, we do have two hands up and six attendees. First up, Carl Pray or Mary Forsberg?
Hi, um, Mary Forsberg, Denison Street. I, um, I have very similar, um, concerns, uh, to the issues that Kieran Crowley has brought up. I, I really am rather worried, I have to say, about the, your finances of Highland Park, since Highland Park is doing a lot of redevelopment plans. And, uh, so far, you've given away two pilots, but I'm sure there will be a lot more. And, um, the schools are not, are not part of the pilot, and, uh, there's no way that you can actually, uh, be forced to give the money to the schools, which is rather unfortunate. Uh, the best thing to do is not to give pilots. I mean, the, there were, all the things over by the, uh, developments over by the train station did not get pilot, uh, pilots. So, um, I, I'm, I'm quite concerned. I'd like to know who, who, who in the borough is, um, take, is gonna take financial responsibility for the future of the town when the town is giving away its money? You know, buying property and then may or may not sell it. Uh, the questions about, um, track A and buying the property down there to, to, uh, to hold it for the developer and whatever the developer gets around to doing something. Where, where is the money? I'd like to know, actually specifically, on the million dollar grant from the state, where specifically did that come from? Where it, what department, what, what agency? Where, where is that million dollars from? Um, I'd really like to know that. And I'd also like to know how much the borough has already spent, uh, trying to get that plaza started, you know, in terms of what the borough had to do to respond to prop issues that the state had of closing the, closing the street. And why is it, I know that, um, Karen Crowley asked the question, is, is the, um, developer of track C going to help finance that? Is the developer of track C expecting to get a pilot for whatever he's planning to do there? Um, it, it'd be nice to know that somebody has, um, is taking a real interest in how our money, our taxes are being spent. So, uh, I'd like to know who is responsible for keeping track of this. Thank you.
Terry, anyone else?
Um, Marilyn Blacher Rice. Uh, you're up next. Please state your name to confirm.
Yes, hi, Marilyn Blacher Rice, three two three, even. Um, my concerns are again about, um, trees. Matthew mentioned that we, we're into hurricane season. Um, there's a lot of dangerous trees in Highland Park. I understand we had an arborist hired to, I believe, inspect the trees to see which ones are in needing, needing to be, you know, taken down. There's some very serious limbs that are ready to fall on a lot of trees, at least on the north side, that I see every day on my walk. So I'm very concerned about this. Some are dangerously near the sidewalks. Okay? And also, I think in the past, there's been issues with this, that sidewalks have been covered by grass, other, other types of growth, um, during this time of the year. Um, sometimes the sidewalks are very difficult to walk through because of this. And what is the town doing to notify homeowners that they need to trim their area? That's another thing. And then again, I'm gonna bring up Madison Avenue, Fourth Street, Triangle Park. This is only getting worse. A tree did, a big branch did fall. I had complained about the trees being diseased. They need to come down. Matt, Matt Hale can testify that a big branch fell a few weeks ago during, um, a wind storm. So I really think that someone needs to look at that and clean up the mess. Um, like you said, we don't have many parks, so this is one little park that needs, uh, fixing. That's it.
Anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Seeing that there's no one else, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So move.
Roll call.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ken Chouhan?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Board attorney, uh, as it relates to Judge Herman, that is not something, would you like to say where that, that, that complaint should be?
Well, um, it, it really does fall within the judiciary system, but if you would like, I have no issue staying after and speaking to Mr. Crowley to get the remaining of the information. And if there's anything else that we can try and do on our own, obviously may happen in our jurisdiction.
Thank you. And, um, Terry, you have a lot, I have a lot I'm gonna throw at you. The RFP for the plaza, the bill process, the bill, the bill, the bid process, I should say. And, um, we got the grant, we got the grant from the state, that's about it. But could you speak to the plaza and the RFP process, because we just passed that one tonight for the RFP?
Sure thing. Um, the Southfield Plaza RFP, the plan for that is to draft kind of the scope of work. That's the thing I'm focused most on, which is, you referenced the three alternatives. I'm not quite sure what you meant with respect to the plaza, but we can talk about that separately. Um, but in general, the process that I had envisioned, although it's subject to, you know, the mayor and council, was we'll draft the RFP, once we have the scope of work, uh, we will put it out, uh, and have respondents. These are professional services under public contracting, uh, licensed professionals in the state of New Jersey. So we don't have to go out to do RFP, but we wanna kind of hear what people have to say and wanna be impressed by the work that they've done in, in other places. So, uh, but the type of team we're looking for, it's probably gonna be a team, either a professional planner with a landscape of architect, or a landscape architect with a planner. They'll pitch their services to us in line with our scope of work, and we'll interview them. Um, we haven't discussed committees or things like that, and that's something we need to certainly talk about, so I don't want to commit to that here. Um, but we've done that in various, for different projects before, so we certainly could if we thought it made sense. Um, but essentially, the intention would be to find the team that's gonna work us through the stakeholder process uh, for what, what our needs are for the space. I'm including the, an expanded parking area on South Door, as well as, um, I believe we're gonna include at least the covered area that, uh, we will have as part of the track C redevelopment, because we kind of want it all to work in concert to each other. So, um, what, the RFP will be published, we'll certainly have an opportunity to look at it and, and see that. Um, and then we'll eagerly, we, um, hopefully some exciting, uh, proposals from professionals in this field. Um, so that's kind of how that part will go. Um, once we've done our evaluation, we wanna make an award, then go through the normal public award process, uh, come to the council, and, and uh, come to the council, and a decision will be made here to move forward. Uh, the, the question regarding the grant, it's a legislative grant, I guess they used to be called earmarks, but it's a legislative grant, uh, to answer that question. Um, and I'm, I'm awaiting a grant agreement. Um, and I would mention, Ms. Forsberg, I asked a couple of other questions, which were already asked in an open door request, which we will certainly provide as soon as we have all the materials available.
Thank you.
Um, I think that was.
I think that was it too.
Um, I, um.
As it pertains to.
As pertains to those, those redevelopment related. Um, I don't know if Joe had anything to add on.
Could I add, I have one thing to add. That's okay.
Uh, Borough Attorney, um, Valment, nothing to add? The council member Hale, you have something?
Yeah, I just, one of the things that Karen and I, I, I thought I already said is that, that the RFP that we approved tonight was for the developer of South Third, and that's not really the case, these are professional services, it's not as if we're going out to a private developer and they're going to choose what happens, this is a community process. And these are the professionals, the plants, the, the architect, the landscape architect and, and that, so it's, it's, it's a, it's a small distinction, but I think it's important, we're, we're not going to, to bid to get a new developer to, to come in and, and develop our park, this is our, the, the town park, um, the town plaza, the town pedestrian plaza, it would be a public process, and their job is to help us work through that process with all the stakeholder engagement, like, uh, like Terry said, so, just a small, small thing, but I think it's an important one to, to, to point out.
Uh, Council President, um, would you like, because this falls under your bucket as in DPW, just the concerns about trees?
Thank you, ma'am, uh, thank you, ma'am, for, for the, uh, for the question. Um, and agree completely, uh, you know, we have a lot of, as we've reported here, we have a lot of trees in town. You know, a lot of the development in town happened at the same time or around similar times, so we have a lot of trees that are aging out all at the same time. Uh, and I think that's what we're seeing, so our shade tree advisory committee, um, working with our arborists, working with our professionals, uh, Borough Minister, Homer Allen, heading for the advice and consent with the council, uh, uh, is, uh, taking an aggressive stance on tree planting, just in the last two years, we planted upwards of a hundred and fifty trees, um, uh, multiple species, uh, from red maples to red buds to river birch to crab apples, uh, and, and so forth and so forth, and so it's a really exciting diversity of trees that diversifies these, uh, uh, ecosystem. Um, but then it also helps promote the tree canopy, so all the things that you've said, um, are, are absolutely correct. If you see a tree limb or limbs or a tree that is no longer living, or that appears to be in danger, please contact, uh, either, either the police non-dispatch number or contact P S E N G as well, P S E N G is always out monitoring the wires. Um, if it's on the north side, you may have wires in your backyard, so there's street trees that are on easement, uh, may be different, so. Um, there, there is a reported concern portal on, on our website, so a lot of it does have to do with just proactive reporting. Uh, you mentioned that you had contacted, uh, Councilman Hale, uh, if you're comfortable reaching out to, 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 to him or any one of us, uh, you can also do that. But I would just say to the public, if you notice a tree in distress, uh, there's a tree right across the street from you that last year was perfectly pollinated, um, and, and living. This year, completely dead, it's not a street tree, it's on somebody's property, so I, I approached them and offered to, you know, said, said that you should really hire a consultant to come and look at this, uh, the, the, to look at the street, so it can happen suddenly. Um, when trees fall during storms, I always say that, that, as public worst chair, Councilman George, the, the, the thing that brings me the most is not the snow or the flooding, it's the wind. We can't shovel it, we can't move it, and particularly when the ground is soft and wet, the wind can really wreak havoc, so, um, our, our first responders are first on the scene when a tree falls, uh, the fire department is on the scene right away to clear the obstruction from the roadway. But again, um, all of these things are, it's always better if you are proactively reporting, uh, uh, these items too. And the same thing with, uh, I mentioned in my council report, uh, overgrowth, uh, on, uh, on sidewalks, uh, residential property owned, um, uh, shrubbery that, that grows over the sidewalk can be very dangerous, can affect sightlines, uh, entry make sidewalks, uh, I can handle, particularly if you have a, if you're pushing a stroller, if you're walking a dog, no matter what we, what, what you have, it can be very difficult. Uh, so I would just say that we have an aggressive tree planting, uh, regiment currently underway, and that will continue. Uh, you can request tree planting on, on your street for a street tree, but reporting is really, really important, and that goes back to the civics that we were talking about, right? Is interacting and involving yourself with the workers of municipal government, this is the business that we're all, that we, that none of us is immune to. Uh, so if you see something, you really need to say something, thank you.
May, ma'am, can I add to that too about the trees?
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to add, plug for my neighbor, many of our properties are just so tight and small that many of the trees border our neighbors' properties, and it's always, um, you know, a good conversation to have with your neighbor, a little plug for my neighbor, when I first moved in there, it, it was kind of like sixty, you know, forty, and we wound up going touch on the, on the fees and the allocation, so, um, you know, in good Highland Park spirit, you know, be nice to your neighbor, you guys can share the cause of the tree.
Okay. Um. Now on the agenda, it's time for a five-minute recess, but we're going to forego the recess, and we have executive session, so, um, executive session, may I have a motion? Our executive session will be on litigation, it's J S M at Highland Park versus Highland Park. May I have a motion to adopt or reject Resolution eight dash twenty-four dash two seventeen litigation, J S M at Highland Park? J S M at Highland Park versus Highland Park.
So, second.
Rocco.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chouhan.
Yes.
Councilman Piston.
Yes.
Uh, this ends our public discussion, um, we will be moving into our executive session, good night, have a safe summer.